Hello, everyone. Welcome. If we can begin to get started and get seated. Welcome, everybody. Thank you to the Exceptional Children's Foundation for hosting this 2022 City Council Candidates Forum. And thank you for being here. Thank you, candidates, for being here. And thank you, Rafael Seigler, for being here. So, yes, I wanted to take the opportunity of a minute just to introduce myself. My name is Maria Jacobo. I am the 2022 Board Chair with the Culver City Chamber of Commerce. And this is our Candidates Forum. And I am going to take the time right now to introduce our moderator, Rafael Seigler. He is a radio talk show host as well as television personality, both not only in the world of Spanish language as well as English language. He has been on shows on FX and Netflix as well as in Telemundo and Univision. And we're very happy to have him. And so, in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month this month, starting September the 15th through October the 15th, I thought that it would be a good idea for him to host and to be the moderator in this very important debate. So, without any further ado, I am going to hand the mic over to Rafael. Thank you so much, Rafael.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, gracias. Thank you, everybody. It's an honor for me to be here. I know how important it is for the city today's event. So, I'm going to explain to you a little bit of the rules that they told me to tell you. Because they said, "You have to be the bad man." No one else wants to be. So, basically, we have eight questions. And each of you candidates are going to be answering each one of them. And you have a limit of two minutes to answer the questions. And if the time allows us, we're going to have two more. So, that means it's going to be probably 10 questions. And then, we're going to open the mic for the audience to ask questions. So, basically, it's like, "Thank you for being here. It's a pleasure." And I think we can start. And, oh, by the way, you know, bear with me because I have this condition called ESL. It's called English as a Second Language. So, I mean, no, but I'm going to do my best. Don't worry about it. So, let's start. And I'm going to start from left to right with Dr. G. And the first question that we have, it talks about public safety. Okay? So, Culver City, along with many other Westside Cities, has seen an increasing crimes. How would you encourage or empower Culver City Police to address this problem?
Thank you, Mr. Seigler. I've always, in my council meetings, I've always emphasized the importance of making our cities safer so that our economy and everything else, our schools, can thrive. To that effect, what I've advocated is that currently, the police budget is at 80%. That we need to bring it up to 100%. So, we'd like to see an increase in hiring of police officers. And we'd like to fund the Automatic License Plate Readers, ALPR, so that when folks get a traffic license for infringement, traffic infringement, or a ticket, there's very little confrontation involved. Also, we'd like to, and we did speak up for funding of the emergency vans. And they were funded for two vans. So, I'm very pleased with the advocacy work that we've done in this past year. I should also mention that, along with everything else, instead of the warrior model, we'd like to see a guardian model of policing so that there's more community policing, so that there's more interaction with the police and cops on bikes back on patrol as well. So, that would be my answer to your question.
Excellent.
Hello, everyone. Freddy Puza. Yeah, this is a very interesting question. It's something very timely. And we need to continue the conversation about what makes a community and a city really safe. There are, I'm very excited that last night, the Mobile Crisis Intervention Team was approved. I'd like to see this unit be out there. There are some people in our city that want to see the police have everything they want and more. There's some people that want more community-based approaches to policing, even abolition. So, where do we go from there? So, I think we should hold all city departments accountable. Sorry if I'm popping with the mic. And they should be transparent. So, what this Mobile Crisis Intervention Unit will do is when someone calls 911, the dispatcher will divert the call, whether it's emergency or whether it's a mental health crisis or an unhoused situation. This will be a great opportunity to make sure we get resources. The police, I've done the civilians' police academy. I've also done ride-alongs. So, it will free up the police's time so they can do what they're mandated to do, which is to fight crime while we have the people who have the right training to provide the right services to people. I think we also need to work with our county with alternatives to incarceration. This could be really important because disproportionately, black and brown, particularly young men, are still being pulled over. So, we need to make sure that the whole reason that we're in this conversation about public safety is about race relations, making sure that there's equitable outcomes for all people. The other thing, I think, that we, from the outcomes from the 2020 uprising, which is most likely the largest uprising in American history, is to implement a civilians' oversight committee with subpoena power. So, right now, there's a chief advisory panel. But that's selected by the chief of police, reports to them. And I think this should be selected by city council and, sorry, and report to city council as well.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you, sir. I'm Devin Jaeger, and I appreciate everyone for coming out tonight. I think public safety in all of Los Angeles and Culver City in particular, homelessness is really the key issue here. I speak to police on the street, and they say 75% of the calls that come over the radio are regarding homeless people. Drug infractions, public urination, defecation, theft, all sorts of violent crime against each other, all overdoses, all sorts of horrendous things. And until we get tough on homelessness and we untie the police's hands from dealing with this issue, we're going to keep having crime in Culver City. We're going to have property crime. It's going to feel unsafe walking down the street. It's going to be unpleasant. And the police, I think they're very competent. I think they have most of the resources they need. They just need their hands to be untied. They want to go and arrest people for committing crimes. They want to make our lives easier as law-abiding citizens. But the current city council has made it such that they're not able to do that. And it's really, I think, shameful and an assault on all of us. Secondly, I think there's things we can do to be more proactive to prevent crime among law-abiding citizens. Right now, I think one of the biggest issues facing the whole country, but especially Los Angeles County, is fentanyl. It's a huge problem with the homeless. It's a huge problem with children. It's a huge problem with young adults. I updated my website about two weeks ago because one of my client's brother passed away from a fentanyl overdose. I guess lucky for him, his boss's son also passed away from an overdose. So, he was able to take time off and reflect. And this thing is just happening everywhere. About a week later, they busted a homeless encampment with two pounds of fentanyl on Skid Row. And sadly, as most of you know, a few days ago, there was two or three girls died in Hollywood at Burnt Street High School. Terrible. What we need is, we need intervention in schools. We need seminars on the dangers of drugs, and specifically opiates. And kids need to be made aware. The police need to be out there. Public health officials need to be out there. Teachers need to be out there. We need to be proactive. And we need to bust people that are peddling these drugs in our streets.
Excellent. Because one of the questions that we're going to have later, it also has to do with homelessness and what's the problem that's causing it. Ms. Venteria, your answer?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming. I'm Divin Sornaria. I believe in proactive policing versus reactive policing, which is something that we've had the last year and a half.
Do you mind explaining a little bit of that? Reactive policing?
Before, I've grown up here in Culver City. So, before the cops were out and about and could watch what was happening and be able to prevent crime. And police presence was known in Culver City. But recently, the directives that were given over a year and a half ago have prevented a few of those things from happening. And the style of policing has changed, which I think we can adjust to policing and we can have police reform. But we do want police to respond when we call. And I think everyone wants that. And everyone wants to feel safe in the city. So, I think it's important to make sure that our police have what they need within reason and are able to police the way they should and not have to have their hands tied, as a lot of people say. And some of the directives, the directives, I think, were given in the wrong order, where now we have the mobile response team. But I think that should have been created before restricting the police versus waiting a year and a half.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ryan?
Hi, thank you, everyone. As a community member here in Culver City for 22 years, I've met many people. I've spoken over the past six months with over 1,000 of our residents. And the overriding response to crime in this city is it's to a point where they've never seen it before. Violent crime, property crime, it's increased. You know, I can't recall the numbers, but year over year, to numbers that we've never seen before. And this is because we have not been supporting our police. I'm happy to report that I have the endorsement of our first responders, both the Police Officers Association and firefighters. And that's because I've been speaking with them, outreach, not just with our community members, but with them as well, and hearing what they need. They do feel their hands are tied. They can't react to what they see on the streets. We don't want our police to be racially profiling. We want them to profile behavior. And they're not allowed to do that either. They're not receiving the resources they need, both in policy and in substance and things like license plate readers, cameras. While the budget has increased year over year, it has not kept up with the cost of labor and pensions. So, we are actually down by 10 officers that we are budgeted for compared to where we were before COVID. COVID was an interesting time. It kind of unintentionally created a defunded situation because of early retirements. We were down to 90 officers. And we see what happened. It's not working. Okay? We need to have a well-staffed police force with the support of city council. And our police officers and firefighters know that I'm the person for this, and that's why they endorse me.
Thank you.
So, I kind of have to address some of this because I feel like I'm in Bizzardo Land. Yes, the police budget has gone up year over year, every single year I've been on city council. Up, 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 up. And also, police pensions. That's right. These are separate issues. We made promises to all of our employees. And that is, police pensions is the single largest line item in our budget that's not an active labor line item. So, and that goes up significantly every year. It's hugely expensive, which is, you know, a key point that I'll come back to. Police are our most expensive civil service. When we send out a police officer for a quality-of-life call for service, which is a huge percentage of their call volume, we're spending a ton of the public's money to send a highly specialized armed person on something that they have jailed for. You know, there's no services that the city council is preventing people from receiving. Police are law enforcement. They enforce laws. So, when we send someone whose ability is to essentially arrest someone or, back not so long ago, to harass them, to threaten them with state violence if they don't leave the city, that's a real waste of resources. And that's what the Mobile Crisis Intervention is about. I'm very excited about it because I think it's going to dramatically expand what it means to be a full-service city and ultimately save money, provide better service to you all, and save money. You know, when we talk about tying the police officer's hands, we're talking about ending vehicular stop and frisk. For many years, it was the practice in this city to pull over someone based on vibes. And I will tell you that former Santa Monica Police Chief and current Inglewood Mayor, James Butts, told me that he was routinely profiled in this city. And he thanked me for being a part of ending that stop and frisk practice, just like Bloomberg or Giuliani in New York. You know, that was our practice. So, when people talk about tying the police officer's hands, if that's what they're referring to, you bet. We're trying to reduce racial profiling in this city. We're trying to modernize the police force. And what I really hope to get to is that public safety is much more than police. Public safety is my kids getting to school safely, not being run over by a car. Public safety is our freedom from environmental pollution, from the oil field. Public safety is much, much more than police, and we need to, you know, expand that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, yeah, it's, I don't know if you guys, but I think we all agree that the things need to be done. It's kind of the same what all of the candidates have here when it comes to, you know, helping the police do their job. And it's, I think, it's quite amazing. So, now, we're going to move. And to be fair, we're going to start this time from right to left. So, we're going to the subject of mobility. Culver City has implemented a pilot program downtown called Move Culver City, designed to improve the flow of traffic through Culver City. How would you have improved the implementation of this program? What changes, if any, would you make to the program? Mr. Puza?
Thank you very much. Yeah, Move Culver City is interesting in that, you know, we ended up being sort of ahead of the curve. And it really is sort of the first building block of the LA 2028 Olympic Mobility Plan. What you're going to see, you can look it up in LA Times, there's essentially, there will be no car infrastructure for the Olympics. And if anybody was here for the '84 Games, people remember it as a very successful transportation set of changes. And then, we let it all go away. You know, all the changes that we made, we went right back to gridlock. And for all the criticism of Move Culver City, close your eyes, drop your preconceptions, and remember Washington Boulevard through downtown at 5:30 PM on a Friday. And it was the same. So, we'll have audited numbers soon. Then, we'll add some actual data to this debate. Tonight, we'll talk based on feelings. But what I'm very proud of is, you know, if you've heard me before, you've heard me talk 1,000 times about climate change and the importance of reducing vehicle miles traveled. This is something that our best regular, the California Area Resources Board, has told us for years needs to happen. We need to reduce the number of miles that we drive by about 20% per person over the next several years to hit our state's climate targets. If you haven't heard that before, you probably don't care. It's fine. If the road safety issue hasn't convinced you, you probably don't care. That's fine. But, you know, this is part of our, Move Culver City is on one of our high-injury networks. It certainly reduces the speed of cars, even if it doesn't increase the lay route very much. But what you should care about is that this change is the first step of our Olympic Mobility Plan. And Olympics will come up again, I suspect, in this discussion because I've a lot to say about it. But we're bringing the spirit of the Games right to Culver City.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ryan? Thank you.
Well, this was a question on mobility broadly. Okay. I'm excited about this topic. I think that there's a great opportunity here to get both our residents around more easily and to whisk our pass-through traffic around us. The Move project, however, while a really well-intended test, it's not working. It's not working for our downtown businesses. They are really struggling. I have spoken directly with the business owners at least a dozen of our stores and restaurants down there. Their customers are not coming down there anymore because it's too hard. It used to be a problem of not enough parking. And now, it's a problem of not being able to get there. I think there's room downtown for a protected bike lane, and I'm for that. But we need to give that other lane back to vehicular traffic. I think, long term, I would like to look at a network throughout the city where during peak traffic hours, we give a lane to the buses. And I've spoken with staff about an idea of giving residents and employees a fast-track pass like we see on our freeways. And that's actually something that LA City is studying. So, it's a feasible potential in the future. We need to have our large corporate employers more intentionally hire from Culver City. If we want people out of their cars, the best way to do that is to get them working in the city where they live. Why don't we do that? It's not just posting a job offer on a bulletin board. We need to have job fairs that are directed towards our community. We also need to build mobility homes on the edges of our city where you can park and ride. I'm a studio employee at Fox, and it takes me 20 minutes to get from the gate to my desk. It's so complicated to get through the security and the parking structure and the elevators and get to the other building. What if you have a mobility hub on the edge of town where you park your car, and Amazon picks you up in their shuttle and takes you to your office? So, this is one of many, many ideas I have, and I'm very excited about it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Venteria?
I want to ensure that the bike creek can be a safer mobility access. I want lights. I want it to be smooth all the way down because there are some cracks along the way. So, I'm really interested in making sure that the bike path along the creek can be an easier, accessible area for everyone to take that as a safe way to ride their bike or to walk. I was in a lot of the meetings for Move Culver City. I was excited about it. When I first heard about it, I said, "Let's try it." I was in the meetings, and I even painted one of the streets. So, I was very excited about the project. I've sat in there in traffic and thought, "Oh, this isn't working." And I've also gone through downtown in a few minutes and thought, "Oh, this actually works." But it's so much of a mixed back and forth of when it works and when it doesn't. I think a lot of things could be adjusted. Some intersections, crosswalks, all need to align and go off at the same time so that all people can cross, and then, all the cars can go, and then, all people can cross. So, I think there's a few places where we can keep adjusting because I feel like, from talking to community members, there are some areas where it works and other areas where it doesn't. So, I want to make sure we look at the data and are able to adjust from there. I do appreciate protected bike lanes. I think that's very important. And I'm excited for that to stay in downtown. And what else? I want people to get through town. I think that's really important, and get to where you're going in a timely fashion. Something that's happening in downtown is all the mobility projects seem to be focused in downtown, where I think some of the projects should be moved to other parts of town. We have the Ting Mobile, or at least, that's what I call it. I think something like that would work better or also work in Fox Hills. I think that would be a great area to have that. You can get from the neighborhoods to the mall to the shopping center where Sprouts is and all of that area. I think that would be something to implement. So, we should be looking at mobility options in other parts of the city, not just downtown.
Just a subtle reminder, we're talking about mobility and talking about the program Move Culver City. And what is the changes, if you think there's, you know, changes to be made, which ones would that be? Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
I like how Councilman Fish stood up, so I'm going to copy him on that. Yeah, I second what most of the last two people said. This bus line is crazy. Like, I wasn't involved in the building of it, the approving of it. But I've certainly driven around Culver City and been stuck in traffic where cars are idling. Not a single bus passes by. You can stand on the corner and watch. You'll see one green bus pass every hour or two. I don't have the data. I'm not a big data guy. But it doesn't make sense. You know, people say it's good for the environment. All these cars idling, people taking longer to get where they're going, burning more expensive gas. How is that good for the environment? It doesn't make sense to me. As others said, you know, it sounds like people are passionate about bikes and people want protected bike lanes. Not something I'm super passionate about. You know, my issues are homelessness and crime primarily, and affordable housing and lowering the cost of building Culver City. But, yeah, on Move, this Move program, we've got to get rid of that bus line. It just, it makes zero sense. You know, if it's supposed to help the environment, there's other ways to help the environment. You know, there's plenty of other programs that are not making everyone's life uncomfortable, seemingly for the only purpose to make our lives uncomfortable. I am not a fan of it at all. They should rip it out. Classic example of government inefficiency and waste. And I'd love to know how much money was spent in all these meetings, all the consultancies and feasibility studies and all these things that could have been spent on better things. So, yeah, I think we ought to rip them out and not think twice about it.
Mr. Puza?
Great. Well, my vision for Move Culver City and for mobility is to create infrastructure that really helps reduce traffic and also reduces deaths and injuries due to cycling and pedestrian. So, I want to increase connectivity between people, but also throughout the city. Move Culver City is a pilot program. There was bound to be mistakes. There are some things, I think someone mentioned the bicycle lights. There are things that need to be updated and changed. That's part of the natural evolution of the project. I agree that, you know, the number-one contributor to the environment or to great greenhouse gas emissions is vehicle miles traveled. We have to do all we can to get people out of their cars and into alternative modes of transportation. You can call it Move Culver City. You can call it what you want. But we need to get complete and safe streets. And, you know, what we're saying is not that everyone will always, you know, walk or bike or scoot. But if you get 5% or 10% of people, you get me off the street, you get a couple of other people off the street, not only is this going to help the environment, this is going to reduce traffic. It's a new program. Overnight, we're not going to see miraculous changes. Human behavior takes a while to adjust. And I think one of the biggest things in this election season is about change and how people can adapt to change and the speed of change. Let's see. Yep, I think I covered pretty much everything. Oh, just another thing. There's a great article I recently read in Brazil. They shut down the streets on Sunday. Immediately, everyone was very upset and mad about it. Business owners were very upset. And over time, now they're asking for more days to have the streets closed off because, you know, people buy things, not cars. And so, really creating opportunities. There's also studies that show that, you know, when people are walking or cycling by, they actually go to stores and shop more often. We good?
Yeah.
Thanks, Freddy. Okay, mobility lanes. All right. You know, first and foremost, when the mobility lanes were implemented, there were no traffic studies done in the beginning. So, we really need to have those done. And Mother Nature seems to be working in our favor with regard to that in the sense that the paint seems to be peeling off the sidewalks. So, we will have nascent sidewalks to begin with. So, let's do some traffic studies. Let's do studies systematically and implement data-driven decisions systematically. Number one. Number two, I've noticed that when I'm stuck in downtown traffic, I'm looking at a green light, but I'm waiting three minutes for the traffic to move in front of me so I can get from point A to point B. So, there are issues with coordination of lights. So, the lights need to be better coordinated by the traffic engineer. And number three, what's happening with the bike lanes? I'm in favor of dedicated bike lanes, where you have the bike lanes that are there by themselves, and they're not adjacent to buses. Why is that? Well, if you consider the fact that most, if not all, of our buses are driven or powered by natural gas these days. Granted, we do have four electric buses that the city just bought. Granted, we do have four electric buses that the city just bought, so we're waiting for those to be um hitting the ground, so to speak. And we're looking forward to that. What happens when the bike bicyclist rides next to a bus lane that's driven by natural gas? Their lungs are exposed to 2.5 micrometer particles that are emitted by these buses. And a lot of times, folks are not wearing masks to protect themselves from the 2.5 micrometer particles. And these particles sit in your lungs and that can create havoc uh with your lung tissues, so that decreases lung function. So um as a physician, I would be in favor of rolling out the, first of all, number one, uh, doing the traffic studies. Be systematic and organized and scientific about it. Number two, roll out the electric buses. And number three, um, let's focus on dedicated bike lanes uh that are safe and folks can be advised and educated about what they're exposed to when they're riding next to a bus driven by natural gas. Let's um have them drive next to electric buses so that it's a safer environment for them. And number four, we, we're interested in accomplishing zero um vision, which is that that is we want to reduce uh human fatalities to zero, if at all possible. So the way to do that is to have dedicated bike lanes that are safe for these bicyclists. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. Now, if you might, uh, thank you. We're uh gonna move to another subject. I know the questions that we have, I know the question that we have, but a lot of people, you know, are really interested in listening to its taxes. And we're gonna be talking about business license tax. Okay, one of the measures on the November ballot, it's a proposed increase of the annual business license tax. Every business in Culver City must pay. What are your thoughts on the impact to Culver City businesses? Dr. G?
Thank you. On the November ballot, we'll be dealing with the pros and cons of uh Measure BL or Business License Taxes or BLTs that some, some of us call it. The issue with the um the pros and cons of Measure BL is that um okay, let's talk about the basics. For gross receipts, um, up to $200,000 are not taxed. And everything that comes after that are are going to be taxed according to this um measure. And the interesting thing about it is that oil law operations, the taxation will be changed from $18 to $40 per $1,000 of gross receipt. Now, how does that fare with small businesses? A lot of us are small business owners. And so you ask the question. Well, um, how, how does that help or hinder us? And the thing is, when you're dealing with uh $200,000, after you pay your wages, taxes, um, and other expenses, business expenses, there isn't much um off a profit margin that you're left with. I applaud the um uh the city for covering at least the first $200,000 of it. But if you ask around, um, small business owners, they say that you, you need at least, um, oh, you, you need to cover at least a million, 200, $2 million so that you, you have um enough funds for wages and taxes and other things, business expenses that you have to take care of. So uh the, the second problem with this um uh tax at this particular point in time is that uh we still haven't come out of the pandemic yet. We may be done with the pandemic, but the pandemic is not done with us. And our receipts have not really come up to snuff uh pre-pandemic uh levels. So we're really at a vulnerable, extra vulnerable point. And um it's, it's like, um, oh, hitting us in the knees before we're able to um recover from the pandemic. So um I think the timing is not um favorable to the small business owners. I think the big businesses in town may be able to support this, but I don't think um i- it's friendly to the small business owners and there are a lot of us out there. Thank you for your
Thank you, Dr. G.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, no one likes more taxes, right? No one likes any of that. So um but this hasn't been updated since 1965. That's about what, uh, a good 57 years or so? 56, thank you. Great. There you go. Just living, living proof of it. So um, you know, the other thing about this business license tax, it needs to be updated. I mean, that's just part of, you know, um, you know, small business is the backbone of local economies. But, you know, as a stakeholder, they have to do their fair share, just like everyone else has to. So we all have to contribute. It's a progressive tax. So out of the 10,000 businesses that are approximately 10,000 businesses, 6,000 businesses will um not qualify under it, so they won't have to pay tax. It will, it's mostly, since it's progressive, it's going after the larger corporations that have moved into the city. I've heard a lot of people who want, you know, them to do more. This is the opportunity for those uh corporations to do that. Talk to some of the people in those corporations and they, they understand it, they get it, they're willing to pay it. And so I think that that's really important. Yeah, I think that that
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Remind me to bring the wireless. I like the wireless. It's old school. So I'm young. I'm 29, but I'm a small business owner. I started my first uh, I guess, serious entity in 2016. It's based in LA, about, I don't know, two, three miles outside the Culver City limit. So I pay the City of Los Angeles business tax, which is very similar. It's, you know, we have four cents on every, um, I think it's four cents, on every thousand, give or take. Uh, and there's a two-year kind of holiday. So Culver's giving a $200,000 holiday, LA gave a two-year holiday. And that was really helpful. And I'll tell you, in years, we made a lot of money. You know, paying, you know, a grand, two grand, three grand, four grand, it wasn't, it wasn't that painful. But when COVID hit and our, our revenues dipped and, you know, having to come up with, you know, two grand, 2500, whatever it is on our gross receipts, not our net income. And I, I, I thought about it. You know, a lot of people say, Devin, why don't you, why don't you move your business to El Segundo? Why don't you move your business to Culver City? A place where uh there is no corporate income tax, corporate uh city tax. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's low enough that it's, that it's that's the whole thing with this kind of tax. It needs to be low enough that it's not gonna cause so much friction, that people are gonna get up and incorporate somewhere else. But it needs to be high enough to actually generate some income. I don't like taxes, um, but a tax like this, I mean, I'd like to see some changes to it. I think it should give that two-year holiday also, so people starting up businesses can, you know, have a little advantage. Yeah, you know, we need taxes to pay for stuff. And this is very similar to the, the real estate transfer tax that got changed last election. I think, I think people support these things if the money's being well spent. If it's being spent on police to keep the streets safe, if it's being sent, spent on seminars in schools, like I spoke about earlier, if it's being spent on things not like bus lanes, then I think it's largely okay. But if you're gonna start spending this money, you're taking out people's pockets, hard-earned money, then it's really, you gotta think long and hard before we approve such taxes. Yeah, my thoughts. Oh, another big thing, spend it on paving the alleys. It's a big thing I care about. It's crazy. A wealthy city like Culver City, unpaved alleys all throughout, makes zero sense to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be nice to see those signs. Remember, here taxes at work, you know? But we don't see them too often anymore anyways.
I spoke up at the council meeting where this was proposed and I said, not now. Not, not ever, but not now. Businesses are struggling and our small businesses in the city are not where they once were. Our city is mostly made up of small businesses. And not everyone got COVID relief funds. People are still paying back um their rent. Sales are not what they used to be. This could be very detrimental to some of our businesses and I don't want to see more businesses close. We've already had a few in downtown close. I don't want to see more vacancies throughout the city. I think this is really important to at least delay this another year. The Financial Advisory Committee also suggested the same thing, that not now. This is not the best time for this and I agree wholeheartedly with that.
Mr. Ryan?
I think I'm gonna stand. I can't sit that long either. So a lot of what's been said, um, I agree with points. You know, I've been here long enough to know that over the last 10 years, we have approved many taxes. Uh, many sales taxes, uh, many parcel taxes, many utilities taxes. Those also, you know, those affect the residents, but they also affect the business owners. And then, so to say that they're not paying their fair share, I don't think so, fair thing to say, right? To couple, you know, all of that with a pandemic, with increased supply chain costs, with increased labor costs. I mean, you know, we're in a competitive job market right now. And to hire quality employees, you have to match, you know, the competition. So, and, you know, rightfully so, labor's being paid more. Um, that's a good thing. But these are all stressors on our small business community. $200,000 in gross receipts is really nothing. If you have one employee, I mean, just think about the math there. You can't live in Culver City on that. You know, we're, we're, like, so, uh, someone said that, you know, you need like $2 million to operate a business. Okay, and that's, you know, the threshold's 1.7 before you no longer feel any new tax. I believe that's the number. I'm sure Mr. Fish can qualify that. But like uh Mr. Renteria said, I, I think it's been a long time since this has been changed and updated and I do think it needs to happen. Speaking to our business community, I think they agree. And I know that in the past, the business community has said, not now, later, so we can't keep saying that. But right now, it's really bad. I mean, I just drove in, uh, listening to NPR and they're talking about, you know, another increase in the um the, the interest rates, um, upcoming recession. And then we're gonna slap, you know, the business community with another tax. So yes, I am in favor with updating this, just not now.
Thank you. I won't go into it too much because you can just read the ballot argument. I wrote it. No one bothered to oppose it. So, you know, this has been in the works for four years. When I first came onto council, I was fairly astonished at the condition of the city's finances. Part of that is that if you look back at plans over the last 20 years that have been developed and not largely implemented, uh, they all sort of contemplate growth in the city and anticipate paying for things like those pension bills which are coming due. Those are promises we made to our employees. We've gotta pay that. And it's either gonna come out of services, it's gonna come with growth, or it's gonna come with taxes. And growth can't happen fast enough to cover that stuff. So, you know, this is just being, I, I used to be a bankruptcy lawyer. I was a corporate bankruptcy lawyer. Where is it? There he is. Yep, um, you know, in the same world as Mr. Wolkowitz there. And I was, I represented municipalities in Chapter 9. You don't want that. You just don't. And um without revenue, this city has promises that it made where it's either gonna cut services or it's gonna meet those obligations. And we get called, we get demands for expanded services and addressing deferred maintenance all the time. You look at the price of a home in the city and then you look at the condition of our parks, there's a very serious disparity there because it's an old legacy city with a lot of built-in expenses. And so we need to start tackling those deferred maintenance and to meet the service demands that people have with homelessness, housing, mental, mental prices and all these different things that we hear about all the time. This is how we do it. And Measure BL, uh, like I said, it's been, it's been in the works for four years. We first started, we first tasked uh city staff and the FAC, the Finance Advisory Committee, with studying business license modernization four years ago. We uh, we deferred it because it would have come up in November in the midst of COVID. And obviously, uh, that was the wrong time for revenue measurement. At this point, I recognize that there are businesses that are struggling, but um there are always businesses that are struggling and we have to do this eventually. So we're putting it to the voters. It's not up to me. It's up to all of you. And uh, like I said, you can, I'm not gonna talk about the cons because I wrote the ballot argument in favor, so. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Mr. Fish. Uh, if you wanna keep standing up because I'm gonna go back to you. And uh, and, and this is interesting because this is, this has to vote, you know, do with voting. And I don't know, you know, guys know that today's National Voter Registration Day. And uh, I think it's fantastic and it's great and it's something that unfortunately you find it like buried in the news somewhere. But it's something that we should all ask people who have not registered to vote to do it. So hopefully we can, we know someone who hasn't done it and we can, and they ask you to do it. But that's my two cents. But anyways, um, the next question, it's about Vote 16. It's another measure on the November ballot that would allow Culver City residents 16 years old to vote in municipal elections. What is the purpose of this measure and what is your position on it? Mr. Fish?
Thank you very much. This is, this one, I can't say read the ballot arguments because I wrote it, because the young people who have been advocating for this wrote it. And I, I would submit, take a close look at that ballot argument. The, the one in favor of Measure VY, which is the Vote 16 measure, that allows 16 and 17-year-olds to vote, if we can make it work logistically and budgetarily and respecting privacy and all that stuff. It merely allows them, uh, if with further action by council, to vote in school board and city council elections. That struck me as quite kooky the first time I heard it. But I, you know, engaged with youth organizers over time and I think their arguments are persuasive. I'm not gonna repeat them here because this is their campaign. They need to convince you like they convinced me. But what I will submit to you is that I ask you to read those ballot arguments. Read the one in favor, written by the youth activists. Read the one opposed and then read the rebuttals. Can you tell me which one's more mature?
Thanks very much, Mr. Ryan.
Do the standing thing again. I too have had a great opportunity of speaking with the young people that wrote this. They, we were in good hands if every young person is like the three individuals I spoke with. We started uh at a coffee shop in Culver City and I got a call for work and I, we, we walked to my house together and we continued the conversation there. I was really blown away by their, their tenacity and their, and their arguments and their intelligence. My concern about it uh is not whether or not they're capable, okay? My concern is what they're voting on. Our council members, our, our, our school board members and, and tax decisions and, and people who decide on how our money's spent. You know, these are impactful things for those that are affected by it. You know, the previous question, right? The business license tax, um, that's a city measure. So uh, if they're not yet, you know, paying rent or paying for a mortgage, it concerns me that they're voting on things that impacts people that do. So that's my concern with it. I, you know, like uh Mr. Fish said, it's on the ballot and we're all gonna get an opportunity to vote for it. I would prefer if something like this did uh pass that it was countywide so that um we didn't have to deal with the logistical hurdles of printing out different ballots. I think they should keep fighting a good fight um and, and keep active and keep engaging the people that are around them because uh these people are fantastic and we should all feel tremendously excited about our future.
Thank you.
As someone who started attending council meetings when they were 17, I can see where you start to get excited about local government and local issues and pay attention to what's going on on the streets in front of you and around you. But I think waiting for 18 is not that far away and it's something that you get when you turn 18. What I do appreciate that the city has started doing to foster the interest in our local government is youth positions on our boards and committees. And um I think that's something that we should continue and there should at least be one seat on every committee for a youth position. And just internships possibly uh with different departments of the city. I think that would be something because once you're interested, let's pique that interest and see where you can go from there. I think that's something I would have been really interested in when I was 17 and hanging out at council meetings. But I think 18, once, once you get 18, you get a whole lot of other things, so we should just wait for that.
Thanks very much. Mr. Yeager?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I have mixed feelings on this one. I know a lot of center and more conservative folks are very against it. You know, they see this as a leftist agenda type thing, you know, getting to the schools and convince kids to become more progressive and they're gonna vote progressive. Kids are generally more progressive. I think that's kind of denying kids' agency. I think kids are, kids, 16, 17-year-olds are pretty smart, pretty mature, at least some of them. I think when I was 16 or 17, I should have had the right to vote. Do I think everyone in my class at 16 or 17 should have been voting? A decent, a decent amount of them. So my compromise, and I think the way the bill is structured, maybe Fish could, could help me with this, is it's, th- this is just to get the council to then start making the procedures around it, right? Correct, yeah. So I mean, I may focus on this thing. I still have to look at the pros and the cons, but if, if certain procedures can be set up around it where not every single kid can automatically just vote the day they turn 16, but they have to take like a class on Saturday to show they're like engaged in politics. Uh, no mail-in votes for 16 and 17-year-olds because, you know, you don't want, you don't want, you have six kids. Now your kids are just like a force multiplier for the parents. That is, that's not, that's not fair. But I think there is a fair way to let 16 and 17-year-olds be engaged. But I think there is a fair way to let 16 and 17-year-olds be engaged who have shown the maturity and the dedication to earn that right. Yeah, I mean, kids can get emancipated. Kids can drive cars. I remember when I was 16, the big controversy was, are they gonna raise the driving age to 18? And we were all super afraid of that. You know, I'd imagine kids now are excited about the prospect of voting coming down to 16. And, you know, they oughta be willing to sit, you know, sit in school on a Saturday and, you know, learn what it means to vote. And if they do that, and they pass it, they, they get a little certificate, and they come in, they get to vote on voting day. Why not?
Thank you, Mr. Yeager.
Here's why I'm supporting Vote 16. I think we should include and increase voter participation whenever we can. That's part of democracy. We let people, 16-year-olds drive a car. We let them get, have a job. So, they have a say in the things that are going around them, and I think that's really important. I think that there's all, some people have always had fear when we've enfranchised people, including, you know, when, sorry, when black people got the right to vote, when women, when we changed the voting age from 21 to 18. There's always been some kind of fear when that transition happened and things turned all right. People also bring up that the prefrontal cortex has not developed, fully developed until, you know, 25. But we allow people to drink alcohol at 21, and that definitely has an effect on your brain development. We also let people vote at 18. So, that, you know, that doesn't really stand strong for me. Also, we don't wanna get in the business of, you know, so up the other end of the spectrum, you know, when people, senior citizens, and measuring their cognitive ability, I think that gets tricky. And so, yeah, that's why I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. I, I think this is a very complicated issue in the sense that if, you know, this, this discussion is coming to us in the midst of our trying to look at violent crimes being committed by 18-year-olds. And the discussion is taking us to a place where there are people in, say, in the state of Florida of kids who were at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. They were able to get their state legislature to change or increase the age from 18 to 21 as far as guns are concerned. So, now this discussion falls in the midst of all of this. So, in, in one way, we're trying to increase the age for gun use to 21, and here we are, trying to argue that, well, folks should be able to vote by the age of 16. So, where do we end up with this discussion? I, I do agree that the literature, I do agree with the neurological literature that states that people are really not fully developed with their malignation, which is brain maturation, until they're in their twenties and thirties. So, that's, that is fact. Okay. Now we deal with sociology. All right. Where do we take this discussion? We, we know that folks at both ends of the spectrum have issues with maturity or cognitive, cognitive maturity on one end and mental capacity at the other end. But they still vote anyways at the other end. So, if one end of the spectrum votes, how do we prevent one from happening at the other end? Well, let's go back two years, to 2020, when the state passed or tried to pass a measure, Vote 17. That is to say, they, the proposition was that if you have 17-year-old kids who are gonna be 18 by the time November rolls around, they can vote. That measure went down in defeat. So, the question then becomes, if Vote 17 did not pass at the state level, why are we doing it this, at the municipal level? So, why are we trying to reinvent the wheel? So, I have a lot of questions regarding this issue. So, to me, it's not a settled issue. I'd like to see more data from, okay, kids vote in their student council elections. So, let's see the data from those. How much participation is there? How intelligently did they behave themselves in, in, in those trial elections, so to speak? So, I'd like to see data before I make my final decision. Thank you.
So, we're going to our next question, and I know everybody, it's near to, to our heart and not only this city, in this country, everywhere in the world, in this homelessness. And Culver City has seen an increase in the number of homeless persons living on the streets. How would you address this problem, balancing the needs to the unhoused and the needs of the residents? Dr. G?
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. As a member of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness in Culver City, we've come up with a lot of solutions and options. First of all, the city was successful in getting that 26.6 million grant from Project Home Key from the state, so we are renovating two motels on Sepulveda. That will make 76 units available for emergency housing and permanent housing as well. Secondly, the council just approved a 95 unit to be built on top of the Culver Palms United Methodist Church, which is on Sepulveda. A lot of you guys are familiar with that place. It's right next to, yeah, the YMCA, AAA and all of that. So, they, they plan to take, preserve and renovate the first floor and build two stories on top of that, as well as provide the church with kindergarten. And they are, the church is trying to fund that with ground leasing. And the council just approved that to be built with a nonprofit builder. So, all of those things are in the works. We are also working on getting safe parking at night, as well as pellet homes online. So, we have a lot of tricks up our sleeves or options that we are ready to roll off the line, so to speak. So, those are our homelessness solutions. I should mention that 30% of homeless folks have mental health issues. So, they also need physical and mental health interventions. And as we all know, the governor just signed a care court, which allows for at least five counties, not including Los Angeles, five counties to be funded with $88 million, where if somebody is thought to have a schizophrenic disorder, they can ask the provider or family members to submit a request. And the judge pretty much writes out care prescriptions, so to speak, to provide that individual with housing if that's needed and mental health care. So, all of that, we should be partnering with state because, of course, the state is better funded than little Culver City here. So, that would be my solution.
Thank you, Mr. Pusa. I know this is, this is a subject that all of the candidates have a lot to say, I'm sure. So, if we can keep it to two minutes because we have a few more questions that we need to go through before going to questions from the audience. If you don't mind. Don't kill the messenger.
It's been nice to not be timed, though, but I appreciate that. I'll try to be mindful. I belong to your non-skill row for three years. And I think, you know, direct service is a compassionate act, but the organizer really talked about the structural issues that lead to it and how local governments can really provide solutions. That's what inspired me to apply for the Culver City Committee on Homelessness and eventually the General Plan Advisory Committee. Homelessness is caused, hands down, by lack of affordable housing. There are many contributing factors, whether it's mental health or substance abuse or even poverty. Some people live below the poverty line and still have access to affordable housing. I appreciate what Ken Ken brought up. The motel conversions, when I was on the committee, was just an inkling in our eye. And the biggest thing was how to get funding. So, we're gonna bring 74 units of temporary and permanent supportive housing. Also, the 95, not moderate, not low income, but very low income units, which is gonna be really important. When we're talking about solutions, we're talking about systems. Systems of punishment takes a person who is struggling, and then they might get arrested, they might get a ticket. What little they had, they're gonna leave with less. They're gonna go to jail for three days, or have a ticket and they don't have enough money to pay. They've become possibly service-resistant because the system's not taking care of them. The alternative is to provide resources and services to people, make sure that they have places to go in the first place. And then they can heal, stabilize, get them job training, and so they can be, you know, a contributing member of society. Shuffling people around, you know, go from Culver City to, sorry, Council District 11 or Council District 5, trying to be mindful of time. You know, isn't gonna solve the problem. It's just taking it to different parts of the city. I do support and think that safe camping and safe parking's an option. Palette housing, it's an option. It's not my favorite option in the world. I don't wanna build a, you know, an industrial complex around it, and I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stay seated for this one. It's like a lot to say. First of all, if you go on my website, devin, my first name, the number four, culver.com or devinforculvercitycouncil.com or devinyager.com, it all goes to the same place, and you'll see my multi-point approach to take care of homelessness. I put a lot of thought into this. There's been news articles written about it. I'm very, very committed to a very, very, very hard stance on homelessness. There should be zero encampments in Culver City. In fact, there should be zero encampments in all of Los Angeles, the whole country. But we need to focus on our place, Culver City. We need to enforce the laws on the books. If someone is defecating in public, they should be arrested. If someone is stealing, they should be arrested. If someone's in possession of fentanyl, they should be arrested. Doesn't matter if you're housed or unhoused, black or white, fat or skinny, the laws need to apply. Again, if you go on my website, you'll see I have a system I'd lay out. Essentially, if you're born and raised in Culver City, you went to Culver City High School, you're a bona fide Culver City resident, you'd have to come up with a place to show it, then I think you should go into one of these very expensive houses that was paid for with $26 million, this thing on Sepulveda. And I just learned about those, these 95 other housing units given to a nonprofit to build. I'm very curious how competitive that building, that bidding process was, by the way. Anyway, there needs to be a sorting process. If you're a bona fide Culver City homeless person, you should be given housing for 90 days until you get a job, as long as you're not on drugs, as long as you're getting mental health treatment, and that's it. If you're not from Culver City, you should be given the boot. You should go back to your community where they have a duty to take care of you. And if you're a criminal, you should go to jail. That's the truth. Like, people don't wanna admit it, but the biggest cause of homelessness are a few things. During the Reagan era, when they closed the mental health institutions, there were, you know, they had a lot of issues, and they were terrible, but guess what? Now there's no more for people. The, you know, all, all the decarceration. I go to UCLA Law School in my spare time. They're doing a huge study right now on how decarceration leads to homelessness. What do you expect? You let people out who are criminals? What do you think they're gonna do? They're gonna be on the street committing crimes. Affordable housing is not the issue. The issue's mental health, drug addiction, and a free spirit. It's free spiritedness. I talk to homeless people regularly to get their opinions. They talk about the lifestyle. They're engaged in the lifestyle. And we need to stop allowing this lifestyle that's detrimental to law-abiding citizens. It's just, it's, I'm very enthusiastic about this. Go on my website. Take a sign if you're interested. No encampments, no excuses. That's my slogan. Yeah. No, no, no. Take it from me later.
I've gone on a ride along with our mental health team that the police department has, and that is just two people. It's one officer and a mental health clinician. And I went out on the streets to these encampments to watch and witness what everyone was calling sweeps. Because I was told one thing and told another, and I decided I'm gonna go on my own and find out what these sweeps are. They're cleanups. They're literally cleaning up around people. And you see how people live and what kind of fire hazards are around. People need help, and we need to meet them where they are. I've also gone to Grace Diner and handed out food and actually had an opportunity to speak with a lot of these people. And it's not just individuals. Yes, some are struggling with mental health, and some are struggling with addiction, but also it's families. And I don't think that people ever think about that. We think of the homeless guy. So, it's just one person. There are families living in their cars. They're struggling. They're trying to make ends meet. They are trying all they can do to stay together because a lot of places would split them up, and we don't want that to happen either. I want the city to partner with a more proactive organization because right now, all the services depend on residents to call. And I want a proactive organization that goes out on the streets and meets these people and talks to them and keeps track of them and keeps data in order to try to meet people where they are and treat them for what they need. Not just one solution. There is no one-size-fits-all solution. We also need to partner with the county and with the state and try to get as much help as we can because Culver City cannot take care of 300-plus people. It's impossible. But I think we can make an impact with the hotels on Sepulveda and possibly get palette housing. I'm also in favor of safe parking. I think those things are important for people to feel safe and get taken care of, and from there, get services.
Thank you, Mr. Enturia.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bryant? Thank you. Really cool. We talked about the homelessness committee and Feed Culver. I was actually on the very first homelessness committee, and I was one of the co-founders of Feed Culver. I've been working hard for those that are in need for a long time. The question was, where's the balance? It is important to be services first, housing first, okay? These people are in dire need. They're struggling on our streets. But we've completely ignored the people who live in homes and live in, you know, apartments and condos, who are being assaulted, who are being, you know, victims of crime, or just feeling afraid. So, there's a balance that we need to strike. That was the question. Where's the balance? Okay? The balance is imbalanced, okay? All of these things that are online, they're about to be built, I'm 100% for them. The Culver Palms Methodist Church, 95 units, the motels. Actually, I dug this up, Mr. Fish. I actually texted Alex back in December 2020, and I said, "Hey, there's a motel that's for sale on Culver Boulevard. This would be a great place to, to take care of our housing crisis." So, I was thinking about this back then. I'm forward-thinking with these things. The problem is, is that it's a regional issue. This homeless crisis isn't coming from Culver City. Yes, we have some people struggling here, and we've got the food insecure as well. But if we found a place for every single person in Culver, on Culver City streets, it would just be replaced by more people. There's, you know, 60,000, 80,000 homeless in LA County. So, we do need to have a no-encampment law on the books in Culver City. We need to take care of the people who are on the streets in Culver City now. And service first, get them housing, get them services. But we need to stem the flow into Culver City going forward, and that's what I'm pushing for. Thank you.
Thank you. I could do two hours, but I'll keep it to two minutes. So, when I first joined the Committee on Homelessness, six, seven years ago, we basically had zero in the way of services, infrastructure, coordination. And just before that, the LA City Chief Administrative Officer had just finished a study on where LA City was spending its money on homelessness and how much. And the answer was $100 million a year. $95 million of it was for crisis response, you know, police dealing with people in crisis on the streets. Total wasted money. You know, that's, talk about not being proactive. That's just not, it's not a tool for dealing with someone who's experiencing homelessness, whether it's substance use disorder, mental illness, poverty, I don't care. Like, just scraping someone off the sidewalk with police, there's nowhere to send them. So, and in Culver City, you know, we didn't really have a response. The police kind of kept people moving, right? That all kind of worked when we were talking about 20-something thousand homeless people, and they're largely contained to Skid Row. When you're talking about 60,000 homeless people, you can't keep them in an open-air containment area. And so, we see human misery spilling forth across the LA basin and beyond. Travel California, it's everywhere in California, everywhere on the West Coast, Redding, Redlands, Chico, name it, especially Chico because of the Paradise Fire, the destruction of Paradise. Over the last seven years, we have Over the last seven years, we have built out that system. We've built the coordinated, you know, with the county, partnering with the county, we've got a coordinated entry system. So we actually do know, we have proactive, we're not reacting, it's not just the police. We have St. Joseph's Center proactively going out, they know the people, they put them into the coordinated entry system. We know they get ranked on their need for services and housing, there's not enough housing. There's not enough housing dedicated to people who, you know, to homeless people, and there's just not enough housing, period, which is the fundamental problem. You need both to staunch the flow into homelessness, because it's not a stack, it's not a stock, or a stock rather, it's not a stock of homeless people, it is a flow. The people that you see are probably 5% of that total. There are a lot of people in their cars, there are a lot of people on couches, there are a lot of people just hiding, tucked away. The people who you see there, they're causing you fear, justifiably for your safety and concern, you know, concern for them. That is a tiny percentage of people who have been on the streets a long time. You know, The New York Times had a piece recently, just a quick thought, about their solution. Our city manager went to Houston to study what Houston's doing right. They're doing the same things we are, but apartments are $800 a month, not $2,800 a month. So, you know, we are starting to build the infrastructure, we've got all these rooms, we're doing this stuff, and we can strike the strike this balance much better, but we're starting from zero. So I appreciate everyone's patience with the response, but we're starting from zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fish. So, we're gonna open the mic for you guys to ask questions to the candidate. We're gonna go a couple more questions, you know, according to time, because we need to finish at a certain hour. So I'm gonna go directly to a money question, which is minimum wage. What are your thoughts, you candidates, about increasing the minimum wage to $16.04 in Culver City? Mr. Fish?
Thank you, I support increasing the minimum wage, I know this is not the forum for it, but I support increasing the minimum wage to $16.04. Our largest neighbor, you know, has been ahead of us in minimum wage for years. It has not driven LA businesses out of, you know, out of business. And frankly, it's probably, given the inflation and wage competitiveness, I'm sure a lot of people who are employing people at the low end are paying more anyway. So I support $16.04, I support a study to consider beyond that, but I will wanna be very careful and be informed about exceeding Los Angeles' minimum wage.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bryant?
Thank you. I attended a council meeting where this was brought up, it was about two weeks ago. And, you know, the margin between LA and Culver City is really small. I went into it with one perspective, and I'm, you know, thinking about it, and think about what the council member said, and, you know, how market forces are shaping what we pay our low-end workers anyway, even the high-end, you know, to be competitive, you have to, you have to, you know, pay what your neighbors are paying. And there's an argument, "Well, let's just let market forces do its thing." But, I mean, if we're paying it anyway, I'm thinking, "Let's pay it, let's codify it." This is literally something I just, you know, thought about and came to a conclusion on. I was struggling with it a little bit, because I know that our, again, our businesses are struggling, you know? They're suffering, all those things I listed out when we were talking about the business license tax. But if most of our businesses are paying this wage anyway, I think we should go ahead and codify it. We should be cautious in who it affects. Not every business is treated the same, you know, we think about the restaurants with their servers, speaking to, you know, the downtown restaurant owners, you know, their servers are making $40, $50, $60 an hour with their tips. And, you know, the measurable part is that minimum wage, and, you know, there's ripple effects with that. They have to increase their, you know, their employment insurance, they have to increase, you know, the social security payments, things like that. So, we should be surgical about this, and, you know, there is gonna be a study done in subcommittee and with staff, and I'm glad they're doing that. I hope that we are surgical about it and we take it seriously. Thank you.
Mr. Jager?
I'm interested in looking at the study once that's conducted, but I think we should continue to follow the counties. This could be detrimental, not every business is making the same amount, and not all small businesses are operating like small business, or like large corporations, so... I think it's something that just needs to be looked at and just detail-oriented before it just rolls out as one solution for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Jager?
So I learned in economics, which is what I studied at UC Irvine back in 2014, as the other folks said, a price floor doesn't mean anything if everyone's paying more than it. So yeah, up it to $16, the only reason we wouldn't is if we're trying to take a stand to say, "We don't wanna do this," but there's, people are making more than that anyway. There should be some caveats for like waiters getting tips, but generally, it's an irrelevant thing. We shouldn't be wasting money on more studies to realize, "Oh, we can raise it to $16," and it's gonna have almost no impact. The bigger thing affecting low-income people, and the few people who are affected by minimum wage, which is generally high school, there's 16, 17-year-olds, and then folks just after high school, people working in fast food and retail, is not the $20 you're already getting per hour instead of 16, it's the cost of housing. These are the people affected by affordable housing laws, not the homeless people. And the real solution, it's a big part of my platform, is to lower the cost of housing in Culver City by lowering the cost of building in Culver City. I don't know if anyone out here is doing construction here, it's very, very hard. Culver City inspectors, not easy. Cost of building permits, not cheap. Park fees, school fees, and I'm building ADU right now, $20,000 in fees. Every month that goes by, I'm waiting for an inspector, it's becoming more expensive to build. How can I rent it out at a reasonable rate when it's costing me $300,000 to build? And the same metrics apply at a larger scale. No one's gonna build reasonably-priced housing unless we bring down the cost to build. Costs 40% more to build any, 40% more in California to build anything, it's the California tax. A shingle cost of asphalt shingle costs 40% more. And it's not the minimum wage causing that, it's all the other things, it's all the very strict employment laws, all the lawsuits, all the insurance, and all the environmental laws. And most notably, just things are more expensive here, all the strict regulations. So we have to deregulate at a local level. We have to make it much easier for people to build cheaply, so they decide to build, so that people actually getting minimum wage can get reasonably-priced housing. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, we're gonna go to that question next, SB 9.
You can skip me then next.
You have two minutes to go. Thank you, Mr. Jager.
The state already approved a minimum wage, but I think that the minimum wage should be increased to be commensurate to the high cost of living in Culver City. We have to think, in this conversation, we're talking about, or I'm talking about, workers who are struggling. We wanna make sure that they have a livable wage. I do agree that we need to reduce the cost of housing and increase housing. The minimum wage workers are not living in Culver City. This has a detriment on traffic, it has a detriment on the environment, also has a detriment on their life and their time that they spend traveling to and from. This has not come at the inclusion or exclusion of businesses. You know, there could be a one-year break before it takes into effect. It could be progressive based on the size of business. If a business is going to experience hardship, there can be some remedies for that. Also, since there is going to be a study that's going to be done, wanna make sure that there's caveats, to make sure that all the, most of the money, maximum of the money goes into workers' pockets, and that corners aren't cut in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Freddie. Okay, minimum wage. The state already has a law that it passed in 2016 that indexes the minimum wage to the inflation index. So the minimum wage is going to go up to $16.04 because we had an inflation index of 9% recently. So the question then becomes, okay, why reinvent the wheel when the state already is taking care of that? So that's number one consideration. Number two, I think that this will impact small businesses adversely. So I think we need to be inviting these folks, small business stakeholders, to the table for discussion and debate, and for their input before we do anything brash that's going to affect their businesses adversely. So, those are two considerations that I like to have folks bear in mind before they decide to go for the increasing of this minimum tax. So that'd be my cautionary, yeah, tip.
Okay, it takes us to the next question, which is SB 9. State law allows for a main drug unit, an ADU, and a junior ADU, which would include limited protections through SB 9. The proposed housing element looks to rezone the city to eliminate some of these protections. What's your position on the change in zoning? Dr. Lee?
These days, everything is connected, interconnected, and we have to look at the intersectionality of what happens when you take down a primary house, on a single-family house, raise it to ground level, and then build eight units on top of it. I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that 30% of the pollution, of our air pollution, comes from building materials like concrete, steel, and plastic. So do we really want to add to our greenhouse gases by raising those houses, the pre-existing houses, just to build eight units on top of that, which will add more greenhouse gases to the atmosphere? So, if, since we're in the throes of climate change right now, the answer would obviously be no. If we want to mitigate climate change, problems with that. So, from an environmental point of view, I would have to not be in favor of SB 9. The other thing that SB 9 and 10, of course, it's kissing cousin, what they do is to aggregate the provisions of CEQA. And that's a big no-no in any environmental, this is neck of the woods. So again, there are two environmental reasons why we'd wanna be leery of SB 9.
Great, well, there's no doubt about it, where California's in a housing crisis, anywhere from two to three million houses we're behind. Also, we know that there are the negative effects of greenhouse gas emissions, which are from, excuse me, greenhouse gas emissions from vehicles, miles traveled. So we know that the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says that we can mitigate a lot of the negative impacts of climate change if we redesign and rezone our cities. So this is creating housing close to where people work and live. So I think that that's really important. SB 9 and 10 are state laws, the city, Culver City did not create them. People don't have to access it, it's gonna affect maybe 140 houses in Culver City. We have houses in streets that have multifamily units on it, and then they have single-family homes. Jackson Street's a great example of that, it hasn't, you know, really negatively impacted that street, and hasn't affected the character of the community. There is change, and it is going to be different. I think that going on with the environmental thing, we need to make sure that we still increase our tree canopy, that we have solar roofs. We just talked about, or city council talked about, REACH codes, and making sure that all new buildings are electrified, have electrified, there we go. And we can also do things with green rooftops and green walls. So I think that, you know, to, in order to deal with the housing crisis, we have to put all options on the table. This is one of them. We have to also do other things to increase our affordable housing and just our housing in general. So this is one of the options on the menu.
Thank you, Mr. Jager. Let me just go behind you, so we won't have the same problem. Here you go, Mr. Jager?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, when SB 9 passed, I think we were all surprised. Among my other things, I am a Realtor, I sell one or two houses a year, licensed since 2020. Represented myself when I bought my triplex on Tilden. And where I live on Tilden, it's CCR4, so it's multifamily. It's a mix of a few houses, but mostly triplexes, quadplexes, fiveplexes, and a few slightly bigger ones. And even where we are, when a developer comes and knocks down a triplex and builds a five-unit, three-story, subterranean parking, beautiful in my opinion, my neighbors don't like how they look, but it's frustrating. I might like the modern aesthetic, but having someone look into your backyard, having someone, you know, where there's no green space, as they said, where, you know, it's glass and steel all right up to the property line, but really, it's the privacy issue's the big thing for me, and it's lowering the value. And this isn't a multifamily area, this is triplexes and duplexes, and I think there's an argument that, you know, we're not entitled to as much privacy as single-family homes. So I'm very sympathetic to single-family homeowners throughout Culver City, in R1, even R2 areas, that are terrified of what SB 9 could do to them. They don't want a three-story monolith being put up next to their house, and now their primary asset, their savings, gets devalued. In an economy, you have to be able to have consistency, that's the purpose of laws, so that you can base your life decisions on the status quo. And there should be a little bit of progress, but you need to be able to accept the status quo and make decisions based on the expectation that things are gonna be generally how they are. If the law is changed and someone can now build a monolith next to you, your house loses value, that's not fair. That's not right. So, yeah, I, there's not, I don't know how much the city can do, but if I get elected, I'll do everything I can to make sure single-family home areas stay single-family home areas.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jager?
I am in favor of ADUs, and I would like for the city to streamline the process to do that, to make it affordable, to build for then someone to turn around and charge an affordable rate for someone to live there. What I'm not in favor of is going beyond the state regulations and expecting incremental infill to pencil out and become and build affordable housing. The majority of Culver City is million-dollar neighborhoods, million-plus-dollar neighborhoods. Building something in one of those neighborhoods then automatically turns it into a million-dollar unit. And I don't think the size necessarily matters once you're in a million-dollar neighborhood. I think single-family zones and areas could benefit from ADUs, but they don't need to turn into eight units on every block and every street. I think we should build along commercial corridors, I think we can focus there. We have a lot of large, low-level properties here in the city. We have a lot of big parking lots that I think we could build on, and we can actually have buildings next to mass transit, so people out of cars and getting people where they need to go. Building along commercial corridors, I think, is something that a lot of people can agree on. We should be looking at the solutions that we can implement immediately versus fighting for all the other solutions. Let's start with that first, and then we'll see if we can hit arena numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Jager. Mr. Bryant?
Thank you. Yeah, so SB 9, it's a state law, and, you know, I'm not in favor of it a lot because of what Mr. Jager said and what Mr. Puzza said in that it's only 140 units or parcels that are projected to change. But what about those 140 neighbors to those properties? And the change in their lifestyle and what they expect every day? You know, what's the goal of SB 9? The goal is to provide more affordable housing. And I think on another level is to, you know, improve the environment, you know, put people closer to, you know, where their jobs are. And I don't think that that's achieving that. What will achieve that really quick is building on our large commercial properties. I actually just met with the representatives from Westfield Mall the other day. This is part of their new business plan internationally, is to go mixed-use. They've got ideas with that property to put a lot of housing. I mean, I'm excited about how much housing they're potentially gonna put there. It would take up a majority of our remotes if it happens. I think that there's great opportunities in outreach with the other large commercial property owners, like where our pavilions and Target are. I did a Google map area measurement of it, it's 35 acres, 35 acres, and over half of it probably is asphalt, you know, a giant heat island. Imagine if that was all converted to mixed-use. Imagine if we had park space there, maybe even another school, we're talking about, you know, too many kids in our schools right now. We're talking about, you know, too many kids in our schools right now. You know, what if we could do that? You know, keep the amenities, keep the grocery store, keep the dry cleaners and the restaurants there, and all those things to keep people out of their cars, you know? Do those things that we need to do. I just think the SB nine argument is kind of a red herring. I don't think it's something that we need to focus on. It causes disruption for a handful of people, and I guess I got to wrap up. But I think we should focus on the commercial corridors and building there with economies of scale, so we can do affordably.
So I first met with Westfield about those plans five years ago. Nothing's happened yet. First met with the folks across the street there, two-hundred-some homes, four and a half years ago. First met with Regency about Culver Center four years ago. So, I mean, it's great to say that these are opportunity sites. They are. We need housing in those locations, and we should think creatively. Principles of new urbanism, we should make wonderful new neighborhoods in our city. Absolutely. But the idea that we're going to wave a wand, and all of a sudden, these places are going to be developed because we want them to, without any changes, without hard work on permitting reform, on zoning changes, on design studies, on this stuff, and counting on private capital at a time when interest rates are increasing. You know, it takes time. So we either have an emergency or we don't. And, you know, it's very easy to face a roomful of long-tenured homeowners and say, "One hundred and forty homes doesn't matter." I would have a much harder time looking those one hundred and forty families in the eyes and saying, "Buzz off." You know, because that's what we do when we close the doors to our city. SB nine is small more, small more reform. It allows a lot split and one primary home and one ADU per new, on both lots, not eight, four, or a duplex and two ADUs. That's it. The, you know, the one hundred and forty number comes from a study from the Turner Center at UC Berkeley, which assumes that none of the restrictions about ownership and lot splits exist, and it's over an indeterminate period of time. So all I've proposed and all I envision with incremental infill, and I'll go back to that in a second, is that we make the, our local regulations match the study that the Turner Center did, so that we can actually see those one hundred and forty units while I'm still alive. And the origin of incremental infill is essentially that we were talking, that we had to choose about whether to study a land use alternative in the R1 zone other than simply taking seventy-five percent of the residentially zoned land in the city out of the general plan entirely. And we decided that we should look at triplexes or in certain circumstances, fourplexes, very similar, potentially with lot splits. You know, nothing was written down in stone. It's simply a plan to study, and it's in the housing element. That's all we committed to do, is to do something that's essentially equivalent to SB nine, potentially more flexible. And all I've hoped for in keeping in the housing element is that we could have some design studies to make sure I'm over. But yeah, I mean, it's not a very big deal, and it's mostly state law.
Thank you very much. Well, due to time, we're going to open mic night. So if anybody has a question to one of our candidates, actually, I was going to bring you the mic, but I'm sure if you stand up and just, you know, tell us your question to whomever or all of them, we're ready to listen. Go ahead. What's your name, first of all?
Jeff.
Jeff.
Hi, everybody. My, my, my understanding is that there's twenty thousand new jobs that are either here or coming here through Google and social media and everything. What type, what type of negotiations, if any, did the city make with the developers regarding infrastructure, traffic, housing, et cetera? And if we didn't, what could we do moving forward?
If you guys want to answer, I don't know, maybe we can listen so we can make it a little quicker and their responses, the answers a little, yeah? Oh, they can, okay. So seems like I'm going to have to give you the mic because the camera cannot pick up that question, I'm sorry.
If you want to repeat it, that's fine.
Go ahead, Jeff. Yeah, it's all good. Yeah, thank you. There you go.
Okay, my, my, my understanding is that the twenty thousand jobs that are either here or coming through social media, Google, YouTube, et cetera. What type of negotiations did the city do with developers regarding infrastructure for housing, transportation, et cetera? And if we didn't, is there something that we could do about that moving forward and getting developers some businesses there?
Thank you, appreciate you, Jeff. Thank you.
Anybody wants to answer?
I guess I'm the incumbent.
As the incumbent. So there's a couple different ways that you can go with new development, right? If you've got the developer, if the developer is the employer, then you can have those negotiations to some extent. If the developer is separate and apart from the employer, like, you know, we have no, we have no leverage or Amazon. There's simply a tent in Culver City. And I don't know if the twenty thousand number's right. You hit all sorts of numbers. You know, I can, I can tell you that during my time, Apple announced that they were going to add three thousand five hundred more jobs than they initially intended to bring to Culver City. We will be, I think, the second-largest jobs hub for Apple. That's because of the talent and the randomness and the desirability of the place. But it's just generally not the case that we sort of do that sort of negotiation of like, you know, you do, you do negotiations on the site, in the development, for adding a turnpocket or certainly we have, you know, with commercial development, we've added a linkage fee for affordable housing. So every new commercial project pays into an affordable housing fund, and also a mobility fund on commercial development that you need to pay in to deal with our transportation issues. And then in terms of like the big infrastructure projects, that really comes down to grants. And those grants right now, through both the bipartisan infrastructure bill, through the state's budget surplus, through the budget reconciliation that was just this year, these are going to be mostly greenhouse-gas-reducing infrastructure projects. And there's a lot of grants available. In California, we've got the Sustainable Communities Grants Funds. We've got, you know, funds for cities that achieve pro-housing designation, which is something I support obtaining. They're, you know, getting these, and it's how we paid for, we paid for Move Culver City with grants from the COVID Relief Transportation Funds. So, you know, getting those sort of grants, which are very, very available, if you're willing to do the things that other governments are asking of us, which is mostly promoting active transportation, public transportation, compact development, these things that we know have positive climate influence and frankly, very good, you know, very good impacts on our revenues, that is the best source of infrastructure money, not project-by-project negotiations.
You want to add?
Yes, sure.
I would just add that I took a walk with our Public Works Director and our traffic, lead traffic engineer, and kind of pointed things out that concerned me. And, you know, I talked about, do you guys need like a dedicated grant writer? And they said, "We got more, more grant money than we have bodies to execute." So what we need to do with our, with our infrastructure is hire more staff, more qualified staff, to actually implement and spend some of the money that we have and continue to apply for these grants. And I'll add, you know, developers do one part, and those negotiations happen. But with our, those large job providers, we should be actively engaging with them to, you know, provide funding for other things in our city. We should be partners with them and not just dictating to them what we want to do. I think that they're pliable and excited about helping in where they can, and if it makes sense. But we have to take that lead.
Thank you very much.
And we have another question. Do you mind coming to the center? Because the microphone cord does not do well, and the camera needs to be going. Thank you.
Well, good evening. First, thank all of you all for your willingness to run for public office and help support our city. My name's Jim Limbaugh. I had the pleasure of serving as president of West Los Angeles College. And I have a question for you all about education. West has the distinction of being named one of the top hundred and fifty community colleges in the country, the two thousand colleges. We have the most successful bachelor's degree in community college in the state. We have the single most important program in training below-the-line individuals to work in the creative content industry because we have a fully functioning soundstage. We also just got funding, both at the state and federal level, to open the only climate change education center in the state. So given that, given the fact that it's right here in your backyard, I'm curious if any of you hadn't given any thought in your platforms to the role of higher education and making our community a better place.
Yeah, first. Sorry. Mr. Yeager?
Jim, I hope no one from SMC hears those assertions. But I love West LA College. I've always, you know, I hope you guys don't get bullied and stop and do the fireworks by all the environmentalists, because that's always been a highlight. I think community college is a phenomenal way to help with EDI. And I'm surprised no one's mentioned EDI yet. I know it's a big topic at the city council. I think one of the best ways we can help with equality and build equity is through education. The more we can promote value-centric education, and a lot of the guys I grew up with, you know, their families are middle-class or better, and their parents forced them to go to community college, SMC, Pierce, West LA College, because they wanted to save money. Two, three years at community college, followed by two years, three years at UCLA or USC. You're saving money on your four-year degree, and the odds of you getting, you know, are so much higher. Access to that knowledge needs to be spread out throughout the city. People need to go into high schools and educate the parents and the students about the upside of taking the route of community college, of looking at technical training instead of a four-year degree and, you know, some less profitable liberal arts degree. So I think it's really a key thing. There's a distinction. So the, the school board dictates most of the stuff, not so much city council. But I think if I were elected, there'd be ways we could influence that to get, you know, to get a voice within the schools and speak to the parents, maybe hold our own programs at city council, educating students and parents on financial savviness and the advantages of community college. And maybe we could squeeze some of these big employers, these big tech companies, you know, as Mike brought up. I think they could be squeezed, especially when, you know, when they're very profitable, maybe, maybe not given the last couple months. You know, I have friends who work at Warner HBO. They're going through layoffs right now. They're, if they haven't started, they're about to. So this might not be the time to squeeze, but when the economy's good, we can squeeze them, make them donate some facilities to you guys over there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I answer something?
Yeah, sure, 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 sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Dr. Limbaugh. Fortunately, West LA College has a precedent in terms of working together with the creative industry. Sony Pictures Entertainment comes to mind. You guys had a program, I don't know if it's still ongoing or not, but some years ago, West LA College had students who did their internship or learned from the Sony Pictures Entertainment mentors, so to speak, in 3D technology when that was being developed. And when they graduated, and after they graduated, they were hired by Sony into union jobs that paid extremely well, seventeen dollars minimum wage starting. So you guys have a template already for working together with local industry in developing programs that help your students. So I think the sky's the limit as to what you can do next with the creative technologies in town. So I wanted to encourage you to develop further programs in the future with that. Thank you. Oh, you still have that program?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to add? Yeah, just real quick.
Really, really briefly. I work at Loyola Marymount University. We have a great program with West LA College, so the business program for the first two years, they go to community college, and then if they keep certain standards, they get an automatic entry to Alamo U. I think another thing that we need to think about with, you know, the future of higher education is in such a, it's transitional, and in transitional phase. So I'm so excited about community colleges and trade schools because not everyone's going to go to a four-year university for the cost that we talked about. Also making sure that, how do we help the students who may be homeless or housing insecure? You do a great job of that, having those kind of programs. And then also for students who need help with transportation, to making sure that, you know, working with the bus, the transit, public transit in Culver City and around it. I think those are some initial ideas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Puzza.
After, I'm sorry, after this answer, we're going to go to one more question, the only reason it's time, after Ms. Antonia said something. And then after that, we're going to give it time to...
Can we respond as well?
Five seconds.
Yeah, yeah, of course. But then I want to have time for you to have your closing statements, okay?
I attended West LA, and I'm one of those people that benefited from the internships. So I interned with Sony Pictures Television and the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. So I benefited from that. I am now a prop master because I did the opposite thing. I worked at a studio, then I went to film school. But West LA definitely prepared me to go into a creative field, and I make art every day. So marketing, our wonderful creative outlet that we have here at West LA is truly beneficial to the community. I think more people need to know that West LA has all these programs available because everyone immediately goes to SMC or thinks of SMC, and there's a hidden gem right in our backyard with West LA, and it's so accessible. I think that we should definitely be funding and uplifting West LA College.
Mr. Ray? Yeah, I, because I know the value of West LA College, I took the time to reach out to Mr. Limbaugh several months ago and learn more about what they're doing. Both my kids took some classes at West LA while they were at CCHS. I served as a trustee on the Culver City Education Foundation. I know and value the importance of education. I think we need to further strengthen that connection with the high school. That's not necessarily under our purview as council members, but that little nugget of information that Mr. Limbaugh stated about how fantastic the college is and where it ranks, I don't think that's known well enough. And I think that there's a lot of things about Culver City and our schools that is not known. We need to increase our level of communication with the community and uplifting all the fantastic assets we have available to our students and better connect our business community to our university or to our, to our community college and to our local schools.
Thank you, I promised five seconds. I'll go a little longer. I'll just say that I'm a WC guy, but I really believe that the community college system is the most important part of the California Higher Education Compact. And I believe that that compact is one of Governor Pat Brown's most important legacies for California. And Pat Brown is, you know, problematic figure like every politician, but one of the best governors we ever had for that reason. My one request, the five seconds I had, is if you could train more paramedic firefighters, that would be great. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. I'm going to bring you the mic.
I'm Ken Alexander. It's essential for voters to be able to distinguish flexible, open-minded, independent thinkers from people who rigidly, slavishly follow an ideology. So I ask the professors, progressives in particular, Alex Fish and Freddie Puzza, to please describe just one or two things from each of you that you think the majority view among progressives gets quite wrong. You don't have to restrict, you can show us your independent thinking, and you don't have to restrict yourself to issues within Culver City.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, well, the question part is, I ask the two of you to please describe just one or two things that you think the majority view among progressives gets quite wrong. I'm trying to look, I'm looking for ideological flexibility here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, who wants to go first? Yeah? Okay. Thank you. So that's, you know, it's a great, the best example is actually housing. The traditional progressive view on housing is just pure anti-developer, and that's sort of the end of it. And that's how we got into a three-million-dollar, or three-million-home or two-million-home deficit in this state. You know, we all live in homes. Every single person's room lives in a home built by a developer, unless you built it yourself. Maybe some of you did. But that's how homes get built in a capitalist economy. And progressives, by and large, until very recently, were purely anti-developer, and that was the end of it in local politics. And you can still see that, it's starting to end because there's a broad consensus in at least the Democratic Party that we need to build homes for people. There's this massive shortage. You can see it from Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, who has kind of changed. She started out a little bit nibbish in her platform, famously disapproving something because there wasn't enough working-class parking, and evolving to where she acknowledged that there's a massive, massive, massive home deficit throughout the United States. All the way to Joe Biden, whose administration released a white paper talking about all the different ways, including ending exclusionary zoning, that... the different ways, including ending exclusionary zoning, that cities in particular are causing the housing crisis. So that is an example of a place where, you know, I've been a leader. I don't say that lightly on housing issues, I've taken a lot of heat for it, but it is, I've been a part of changing the discussion among progressives on what the housing issue is.
I think I'd go with, oh, there, college tuition. I don't think that college should be 100% free, just yet. I think that we should base it off income levels, and that if, you know, if someone wants to go to college, we should give them the opportunity to do that. But if you come from a family that has more money than you can, you know, then they should be able to pay that. So a slow gradual change, not immediately, just making college free tomorrow. And so, yeah.
Excellent. So we have time for one more question? Two more? Well, yeah, two more.
Thank you, Rafa. My name is John, longtime Culver City resident. My question goes to just Dan O'Brien, and anybody else want to pipe in after that? That's fine. Everybody talks about the homeless crisis, and it is a crisis that we have in Culver City today. They talk about housing for the homeless, right? This is a big issue, probably one of the biggest issues we have. But I don't hear a lot about what is going to happen when they are built. What will the medical services, the health services be? What kinds of health programs? I'm a health professional. So I ask you, and I ask you, what will we be looking at going forward when that reality comes to pass? When we have the housing for the homeless, what kind of infrastructure for mental health and medical are we going to be looking at? Can you answer that?
Thank you, John.
Mr. Limbaugh? I assume you're speaking about the home key motel conversions. So I was excited about this when I first heard about it, and I reached out to the city, Ms. Tethis Barnes, who I worked with way back in 2004 on the homelessness committee, and I, you know, said, "How can I earn more?" And she connected me with Exodus Recovery, who's going to be the administrator there, and they in turn connected me with a home key motel in Baldwin Park that's been running, well, now, for over 18 months. At the time I visited, I think it was up for about 15 months. They had 88 rooms. I was really excited by it. I was excited about how clean it was. When I walked in the door at 7:00 in the morning, there was a staff of four or five people getting ready for their day. And when I spoke with the director, here's what she told me they have. They have 24/7 security. They have once a week win-in service for all the tenants. They have, each of the tenants have their own key, which has, which means they have their own bed, they have their own place to store their things securely, they have a shower. That's a big carrot, that's a big incentive for the unhoused, who, you know, a lot of them don't want to go into services, for them to take those services. They had a full-time nurse on staff. They had three full-time caseworkers. They had a drug counselor and a mental health physician. They had three square meals a day. People don't realize that it's a massive bureaucracy to get people help. And when someone's on the street, it's even harder. You know, how do you track them down when they got assigned something, or when you need to get information from them? That's what these caseworkers are for, and they've got the people that need the help on site to get through all the paperwork, to get them the disability that they deserve, to get the emergency housing vouchers that they need. It takes months and over a year. And that place, people are afraid of the crime that might come to the motel area, motels around, on Sepultepec. The fact is, this motel, that is managed by the same organization that's going to manage ours, was seeing calls by police several times a week prior to the creation of this home key place. Now it's once a month. Crime has actually decreased. So that's what's happening there. When I went there three months ago, they had placed 18 people in the permanent supportive housing from the 88 rooms, and people were online waiting for their turn.
Thank you. So we, yeah, go ahead. Fortunately, we have one more question, because then we're going to have the closing arguments.
So I agree with most of what Dan said. I actually live about 500 feet away from those two motels. I found out they had been converted by attending the Homeless and Housing Committee meetings. It was the first two or three in-person ones. And let me tell you, my neighbors are not pleased. I am not pleased. But the more I thought about it, the people at that committee meeting, Christina Stoffers and then the other lady who runs the housing program, they're pretty sharp, and they made a good argument. There's Tilden Terrace just a few blocks away, and I had no idea that was affordable housing done through a similar program. I ate sushi at the sushi place there, there's a hot yoga place there, there's a coffee shop there. So just as Dan said, you know, would you rather have a super dangerous motel or a converted, you know, shelter-type situation? Speaking to health, though, I think security is the key thing. Like, that's what me and my neighbors care about, and frankly, that's what the homeless should care about, too. You know, nothing, nothing's going to be more dangerous to your health than a bleeding wound. I think the homeless need to really be protected from, you know, from predatory people in the community, drug dealers, criminals, and from themselves, frankly.
With regard to managed care, we're talking about managed care at the facility.
Yeah, I'm not an expert on, you know, on chronic treatment. I do think acute treatment, I mean, even those housing is meant to be 90 days, it's not meant to be long-term. I think we could pay for, as a city, detox for a large part of the homeless, but again, all these things are so expensive, especially managed care, you know, long-term care. That's why we need to isolate the homeless that we have a duty to. We cannot provide 300 homeless in Culver City the quality of care they, you know, deserve. We can provide that for 50 to 100, which is probably the number of bona fide Culver City homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah. Do you have one minute? I'm sorry. That's all correct from Dan. You know, it's going to be a very, very well-put-together facility. Exodus does a good job, and our housing department's awesome. But in addition to your point, you know, the answer to homelessness in a lot of our crises definitely does not end at our borders, that's not the end of the discussion. I happen to sit on the West Side Cities Council of Governments, which does deal with regional issues, in addition to a role with the Southern California Association of Governments, three roles. And we're looking at the West Side Cities COG at creating mental health beds at the Santa Monica Airport. So that is, you know, directly responsive, very, very intensely managed care, if needed the most. Thank you very much. Okay? Here we go, and then we go with you, sir.
Sure.
I'm Luther Henderson, former professor of music at Los Angeles City College. Everybody knows my wife, Patricia Seaver, we're both emeritus faculty of the LA Community College District. And I wanted to commend Dr. James Limbaugh of West LA College. A college we retired three years ago, and as community college instructors with 43 and 44 years of experience, I want to commend you on what you said as far as community colleges. I've listened very carefully to all the candidates, and one of the things that struck me is that we are not in a democracy, we are a constitutional republic, and we are in the free enterprise system, the free marketplace. So what, listening to you just brought up a, brought to mind a quote by Thomas Sowell. Envy was once considered to be one of the seven deadly sins before it became one of the most admired virtues under its new name, social justice. I want to, I want to, and it just rings to bear, what are you, and this is for all the candidates, because we are a free enterprise system? And since I served as a cultural affairs commissioner from 2001 to 2009, and my wife the school board from 2009 to 2013, we brought a lot of businesses into Culver City. And so to attract, what are you going to do to attract more businesses to Culver City? And yet, you're going to go ahead and talk about a business tax that's going to be detrimental. What businesses do is bring jobs for people. So I'd like you to address the paradox that brought Culver City, because some of you that have been here in Culver City, you know that the Culver Hotel was just a dope den around with all that mess around Culver City, and now you look at it, some of you have memories, you know, now Culver City is the envy of Southern California. So I'd like to find out, what are you going to do to attract more businesses and more money? Because your problems, you're talking about, we don't have any housing, we don't have this, how are you going to attract the income? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. So who wants to answer that? And unfortunately, we're going to have to give it to one minute. Yeah, okay, here we go. The types of businesses that want to locate in Culver City are the types that like the same things that residents like, you know? So it's, it's not an accident that Apple decided to double down on its investment during the last four years. They didn't look at the government and say, "That's terrible, we're going to put 3,500 more jobs there." They're looking at the city, they're looking at the forward-looking trajectory, dealing with problems that they and their corporate culture think are important to handle, and they're seeing a government that's responding to them in a way that they, that they value, and that they know will attract the talent that they need, the high-value, high-talent engineers, creatives, and they're locating them. So we just need to keep doing that. We need to do, keep making the city a wonderful place to live, because it'll be a wonderful place to work for the kind of jobs that we're forming here. Thank you very much. Last question, sir?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I know this is a really tough job to run for office and to be in office, my councilman Fish, but I have a concern that's been on my mind since 2020. You know, I saw a lot of businesses throughout the country burned in cities when there was rioting. It was devastating. I saw a lot of city officials not prevent that, kind of be complicit in it by just standing down and allowing rioters to kind of run, you know, run ransh on over these cities. Luckily, Culver City had a very good police force and a very responsive mayor, who did a lot of things during that time to really save our city. We had an election that came up in 2020 where there were candidates running. Some were running on a platform of defund the police. I'd like to see what you feel about that, what your thoughts are. I remember, Mr. Puza, you were a member of CCAT, or at least you had that on your website. One of their positions was they were demanding a 50% reduction in our Culver City Police Department. And I remember you being on a call where I asked you the questions during the call about that, and you didn't know how that was going to happen, or how they were going to handle the 50% reduction, and still be able to provide the safety that our school and our, and our community and our kids and our families here all kind of depend on. Because the police department is what kind of has the glue that holds this city together. And to Mr. Fish's point, the cities, those companies that are coming here, and I talk to them all the time, they come here because we provide great services, and particularly we provide safety. They are very concerned about this uptick in crime, in violent crime in our city, robberies, and, you know, as Luther just pointed out, you know, that's not going to continue if we raise their business taxes. I don't want to get too far, I really want to talk about public safety, but when that public safety leaves us because we defund our police department, or we do not support our police department, and we are still down quite a few officers, these companies are not going to stay here. They will leave. They can up and leave, they're billion-dollar companies, and they'll take their thousands of jobs with them. So what is your position about a, this idea of defunding our police department and not supporting it?
So unfortunately, one person to, yeah, I wish we had the time for all of you, but sure. I want to have the closing.
Just because I was named, yeah, so in...
You can add the answer on the closing. Say, you know, the rest of the people.
Got it, got it. Yes, so in the 2020 election, there was a call for a reduction in, of 50% of the police budget. I was listening to the community, talking to people, that's what they wanted. We're still waiting, actually, for, you know, what that would look like from the city. I'm not, you know, we have to have a conversation, and the city has to come back and see what that would actually look like. So that was part of it, and I think that addresses kind of that conversation that we might have had. You know, I just, I think that, you know, I've done the Civilians Police Academy, I've done ride-alongs, I've learned about the, how the police work. You know, I think they should, they're designed, and they are, you know, their mandate is to fight crime. They will say to you that, you know, they don't have the training for, to deal with unhoused, they don't have the training to deal always with mental health crisis, not saying that they're not going to ever be a part of that, but we have to broaden our perspective on what public safety is and what that means in community safety. So how do we build relationships? How do we bring our community together? And this is how we increase safety. So...
Okay, Finn, Finn, Finn.
Yes, so, and so that's why, you know, the Mobile Crisis Intervention Unit and the Civilians Oversight Committee were two of the things that came out of the uprising, the largest uprising in American history over, you know, police brutality. So we still have to recommend that. And so those are the two things that are carried over, for me at least, into this election.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I would like to, let's give a big round of applause to all our candidates. So now, we're going to go for all six of you in closing statements. If you want to add to the answer to the gentleman, you don't think you're closing statement yet, but we're going to keep it to two minutes, and she's relentless when it comes to time. So, Dr. G, please.
Thank you. My name is Kiki G, and you can count on me to make data-driven decisions with input from the community to craft public policy that is palatable with most, if not all, members of the community. As a female physician, we are known for our ability to listen, acknowledge, and incorporate new ideas into our decision-making process. This past April, I saved 17 trees in Media Park from the developers' chopping block, and saved the city $1 million by objecting to the lawn installation in the middle of, in the third year of a drought, and construction of a cafe that would have taken businesses away from pre-existing downtown businesses. So I created a win-win proposition in this instance. So I can do more on the council, and I would be honored to work for you on the council. I would be honored to have your vote in November. You can go to my website, gforculvercity.com, or if you have a question, you can shoot me an email anytime at KKGI4, the number, culvercity@gmail.com. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience and your attention tonight. I hope that you got a glimpse into my decision-making process. I'm actually a member, I'm on the Board of Directors of another Chamber of Commerce. And one of the things I'm really excited about, the work that I'm doing there, is they just did their strategic plan, and really, the foundational element is including diversity, equity, inclusion in all of their programming. So I'm connecting them to subject matter experts to create a certificate program for business leaders who want to talk about these issues. You know, my platform is rooted in diversity, equity, inclusion, sustainability, and community well-being. I'm proud to have been endorsed by LA County Supervisor Holly J. Mitchell, Assembly Member Isaac Bryan, and I hope you get a chance to look at my endorsement page. There are dozens of elected officials in Culver City in the region, former and current, and also dozens of community members that represent all different types of ages, races, genders, sexual orientation, gender identities, homeowners, renters. And this is, when I say that I'm a listener, this is how my platform came together. I believe that a council member should not only have a vision, but they should have, be able to work with people even when they disagree, and also lead with conviction. And I think I have all three of those qualities, whether it's my service on two Culver City committees, the Committee on Homelessness, and the General Plan Advisory Committee, to my volunteer work in the community, also to my professional life and public engagement. I'm under no illusion that Culver City alone will solve all of the problems that we face, but it's my promise that we'll do our fair share of the work. And thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Limbaugh. Do you have a...
I'll try to keep it brief. I didn't grow up in Culver City. I grew up in Rancho Park, about three miles away. I'm not a geographer. I chose to live here. My wife is Ugandan. She's moving here very soon, she's not here at the moment. I'm not worried about her getting discriminated against. I'm not worried about things like that. I'm worried about us feeling safe walking down the street. I'm worried about it being cleaner in Uganda and safer in Uganda, a developing country, than in Culver City. I'm worried about, am I going to be comfortable raising my children here, or are we going to have to move because of the same issues businesses are worried about? I think businesses will tolerate, you know, the two to four cents on every thousand if they're getting value for money, just like I think homeowners and renters will also, as long as the city's delivering what it's supposed to, clean streets, safety, being able to wear a nice watch and... able to wear a nice watch and not get robbed, being able to go to an ATM at, at Westfield and feel safe. That's it, simple request. And, you know, I don't have any backers. I've got, you know, a few people have done a little bit of, this is, I'm not a politician, I'm self-funding my campaign because I believe I can roll up my sleeves and get things done to make this a place that me and my family want to live in. Because as it is now, if things continue like this, I don't think I'd want to raise a family here. You know, with, with feces on the street and insecurity, it's just not, it's not worth it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edgar.
I'm running because I love Culver City. I'm born and raised here and my parents have been here for 60 years. They came from Mexico and chose to live here and build their lives here. So we've been here a while and we love it. We've fore-established and I'm not going anywhere. I'm not running to be a politician or to seek higher office. I'm running to take care of home, everyone's home, and make sure that the city provides everything that everyone needs to function throughout the day without making lives more difficult for people. I come from a creative industry, but I know how to get things done because it's required. And I feel a lot of that training and a lot of how I work and a lot of my leadership at work can translate to city, to running the city. And I'm not alone in this. It would be a board of five. So I know how to collaborate. I know how to work with people that I may not agree with and I'm okay with adjusting and being flexible. We can find win-win solutions that benefit the majority of the city. And I think that's what I'm running on. I know that's what I'm running on. That's why I'm running. I want to take care of this place. It's important to me, it's important to all of you. And I want this position. I want to be on city council. I've been paying attention for the last 20 years. I've interacted with a lot of different council members. I am endorsed by Vice Mayor Albert Vera, Councilmember Yoran Erickson, eight former mayors. And this is all validation from people that I've respected over the years. And it makes me really proud to have that validation that I can do this too. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
I lived in, I've lived in Culver City for 22 years. My wife and I, Beverly, came here with our, our small daughter that came up through the Culver City schools. And I got into involvement in the community because of my children. I've been working for Culver City my entire time here, starting with the parks, being one of the activist residents who formed the first homelessness committee, going into the schools and being on the Culver City Education Foundation as a trustee. I've worked just passively in getting things done. If you look at the murals on our streets on Wind Blading, Sepulveda, these are things that I've done because I love this community. Right now I feel it's really fractured. I, I think leadership not only involves getting things done, but collaborating, finding common ground. I don't see that happening. I've got the track record of doing that in the past. My ability to communicate people and listen are strengths of mine and I, I think that they're what, you know, will help bring Culver City forward. I've got the endorsement of Councilmember Erickson and Vera and 12 former mayors. I've got the endorsement of the police empire. I've got the endorsement of hundreds of community members that I've spoken to directly. I've been out there walking, talking, meeting with people, over 20 meet and greets. I'm trying to learn from our business owners and our community members. And because I want to bring everyone together, I'm the person you need to vote for. Thank you.
Councilmember Alex Fish.
Thank you very much. I've had a lot of cool jobs in my life. I've been an ocean lifeguard, I clerked for a federal judge, I was a shareholder at a law firm, I am a deputy attorney general today. This job has been the most stimulating and I poured my whole heart into it and it's really required a lot of me because, you know, as it should for anyone who's really doing it, when you remove the politics from local politics, we can all get along just wonderfully and cut revenues together, but there are obviously problems that have festered in this state for 50 years as a result of that governing philosophy. So I am not ashamed at all of the fact that we have politics in our local politics because we're starting to solve problems that cities throughout the United States have avoided. If it were easy and popular, it's been done. So I'm here to grab the live wires and solve these problems at a fundamental level. As a result, I'm endorsed by people from all over the state and all over the region. Because what Culver City is doing is attracting attention because we are moving into the future. This is the city of the future and if you realize it, then we'll keep going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the candidates. Thank you. Let's give a big round of applause. Thank you, thank you guys. A big applause for you two. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having me.